Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the Prattville City Council Tuesday, April nineteenth, twenty sixteen, City Council Meeting. I'm going to ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance of the American Flag and remain standing by invocation.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. O gracious God, we come tonight as humble as we know how. Lord, we want to say thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. Thank you for being so good to us, for we all have sinned against you, and we ask that you forgive us for our sins. We ask your Lord to guide us tonight as we make decisions for the city of Prattville and these your people. Be with our mind, be with our hearts. And now, Lord, we're not selfish tonight. We come praying for those who are less fortunate than we are. Pray for the people of Houston, oh Lord, in a special way, that you will touch them and build them up where they're torn down and where they are weak and where they are going through, for only you can deliver from the storm. And then when we depart tonight, oh Lord, allow us to arrive safely to our destination, and we will honor you by giving you the glory and the praise. In your name we pray. Amen. Um, Clerk, may I call a roll, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Counselor Whiteside.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
We call this meeting to order. Acknowledge our character trait of the month is forgiveness, releasing feelings of resentment. Character trait of the month, forgiveness, releasing feelings of resentment. This time we have approval of minutes for City Council Meeting, April five, twenty sixteen. We have a motion to approve those minutes. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of approval of those minutes signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons regarding tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand. Any item on tonight's agenda? Mayor, you have a report?
Yes, sir. Before getting to that, may I ask for a corner privilege?
One privilege granted.
I might ask Chris from Jackson Thornton to come out and give you an insight of the fund issues of the city of Prattville. That's what I'm thinking.
Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here once again to deliver the audit report for the year ended September thirtieth fifteen. I'm pleased to say that the team around me, behind me, worked very hard this last year, and we were able to issue an expected unqualified opinion. We issued that on March twenty eighth, so just a few weeks ago, but we got it done and got that published. If you remember, the financial statements include the city, library, the airport, and HPRA, so there's a lot going on there. One thing that I want to point out, and I haven't had a chance to address you guys, but just to congratulate you guys on the certificate of financial excellence. I know that may sound corny, but the GFOA certificate is a big deal. There's not many towns and cities in this state that get it. Y'all got it for the first time last year, and I'd congratulate y'all. We filed, finished the audit here towards the end of March in the anticipation of filing another application to get that certificate. So it's a big deal. It makes a lot of difference with your bondholders. Hopefully, it saves you money in the long run. So again, I'd congratulate the team back here. So with that, you've got to remember the financial statements are complex. There's a lot of pieces of paper in there. It covers different reporting bases from full accrual to modified accrual, which is a lot like your budgeting process. And then we have enterprise activities, wastewater sanitation, which I know some of y'all are passionate about, and that will really start with you. The financials also have areas of just good old reading, like the transmittal letter, which is just a high-level overview of the town, the city. And then you have an MDNA, which Doug also writes, and that is another good read. Then there's also notes, the notes. So in the notes this year, there's a couple things that get talked about. I'll go into more detail on that. There's also some, a lot more at the end that are comparative. So if you want to see what last year did to this year, did five years ago, ten years ago, go way to the back, you'll find it. But I just want to cover some highlights, like the in-your-mind sticking points. So this year, if you want to think what net income, what does that look like? So it was about nine point eight million. That's good. That's a good thing. That's a smiley face. I usually put a smiley face next to it. You had a good year last year, too. It was seven point eight million. So you're talking about a two million dollar extra increase over the prior year. So when you talk about, well, how do we get there? And so when you peel back that layer and you think, how do we get there? You know, your revenues have increased, and you've done a good job of not eating that extra revenue up with expanding expenses. You've held back on expenses, done a good job of managing that. So with that, with that, you know, that good outcome, talking about how does that impact balances that I care about, like cash? You know, sixteen point three million in cash, that's just a total government-wide number, good number. What about debt? I know debt is something that a lot of people care about, and it's talked about. Forty-three point three million in debt. It was decreased, though, over three million. So that is a good, a good sign. It is continuing to decrease in big numbers. One of the things y'all did this last year, y'all refinanced a little bit over twelve million dollars. There's a reason you do that, and there was an economic gain. They calculate that with present value, the interest rates, and time, over a million-dollar savings. So you're going by refinancing, and I think y'all have gotten in a good habit of having good counsel, doing that year after year, you'll continue to save money with good interest rates out there. Talking about one thing that's very unique to this year and all towns that have pension plans. The government accounting board made us bring in the net pension liability. What is a net pension liability? Well, you have assets and you have an obligation. That net liability is close to twelve million dollars. That now shows up on your full accrual statements. It was implemented this year. That promise has always been there. It's just the accounting is now there. I think it's probably appropriate. It lets people talk about it. It gives a place to start talking about it. When you look at your ratio of the liability, the pension liability, and your investments, it's seventy-six percent funded, so you're not in a bad place, I don't believe. With the change in interest rates, one percent, and the models they use, it halves that liability. So you can see that the market does a lot with that number. So just to be considering that. And both fund level and government-wide, you have positive equity. I'm going to use the term equity, but they use the term net position or fund balance. On your budgetary style of reporting, you have six million dollars of unassigned net equity. So when you think about earmarking and that kind of stuff, this is just unassigned. It's good stuff. That's what the bond guys look at. Probably the last thing I would say, two more things, actually, your budget. So your budget is on page twenty-two, and so there's two good takeaways there, too. So you beat revenues by two million, and like I said before, just a few minutes ago, you held onto your expenses. So you budgeted, you pretty much were spot-on. You beat budget by two hundred and fifty-five thousand. So again, revenues, held on to them. You stayed to your budget on the expense side. The last thing I'll say is we do this, again, like I said, the audit and government auditing standards. We also have to test compliance, just over basic compliance, with state laws and federal funding, so we didn't find any instances of noncompliance. We also have to do a single audit. You may ask, what's a single audit? You have major grants that y'all do approve in your sessions here that they administer ALDOT, CDVG, those paving projects, and there are rules that you have to follow on how that gets done. We have to test that specifically, the specific programs, and we did not have any instances of noncompliance with those specific programs when we, you know, dove deep on them. So those are two other good things to speak about. I've said a lot. You have a lot of paper there, and I print mine on two pages, and that's still a lot. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain them. They know how to get hold of me. You hopefully can call me anytime you like.
Does anyone have any questions, comments, at this time? I think they'll read it first.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Always good to hear good reports like that, but I want to tip my hat to this council because without your leadership there, that audit would probably not be a possibility there. I'd like to say thank you to Doug Mosley, our finance director, IT director there, all his due diligence, his hard work. HR has helped out in keeping our costs down through our CareHere programs. City Clerk has helped us out by keeping us out of trouble as much as she can and doing the best she can with what she has to work with. Then we have our department heads, our police and our fire, our public works, our quality of life, our judicial. Without all their hard work and due diligence there, I know at one point in time, the old phrase, if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. And I think that that has gone away from this entity that we know is the municipality of the city of Prattville. I want to say thank you to everybody here that has actually helped us get us to this point that we are now. But moving right on along, Mr. President, the Cropsey Master Tournament will be in town starting Wednesday, April twenty-seventh. They will launch from Cooters Pond. Will help, will join us for that event. Parks and Rec's Director Kelly Cook can provide you with more details on that. The annual Water Festival is Thursday, April twenty-eighth. Our planning department, Parks and Recs, and other city employees help out this event, which educates our fourth graders on the importance of clean water. The Yokohama Tire LPGA Classic will be in town beginning May second. Our crews have coordinated to provide support via public safety, special events, public works. Just takes some behind-the-scenes work to get the city ready to handle the influx of event participants and attendees, and I know all of our eateries in that area really do appreciate as they come in on that one. We recently took delivery on some new garbage trucks. The golf event team had signage made that fits into the brackets. We had mounted on the trucks, so we're currently displaying these ads for the tournament. When they come off the trucks, we're using that space for upcoming special events, PSAs and other announcements such as City Fest, Mayor's Bike Ride, and Touch a Truck Events. The Chamber will hold City Fest on May thirteenth and fourteenth this year. They're celebrating their thirtieth year with some old favorites and some new attractions as well, so please be sure to check that on our website and social media, also PrattvilleCityFest.com. Without further ado, Mr. President, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments for the mayor at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. This time we have reports from the council and special committees. Counselor Striplin. Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Whiteside.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, on April thirteenth, we had a vehicle maintenance committee meeting. We discussed budget expenditures ratios to date, upcoming budget projected expenditures, and projected items for next year's budgets. That's all.
Thank you. Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
At this time, we have a report on the status of the city finances from our finance director.
First sheet in the packet that you have in front of you is the revenue report for the month of March. You will see that so far we have received fifty-six point five seven percent of our budgeted revenues for the year, and on the revenue side, we are forty-one point six seven percent through the year. So far year-to-date, we are up four point oh seven percent, or seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-one cents. The next sheet in the packet is the tax breakdown comparison for the month of March, showing the difference in all the tax line items. Everything's up. Overall, we're up on the tax side by about ten point five percent for the month of March, so we had a very good March. The next set of sheets in the packet is the expense information by department. On the expense side of the house, we're fifty percent through the year. You will see that we have actually only spent forty-seven point six five percent of our budgeted expenses, so we're running very well, running very lean on the expense side of the house. The next sheet in the packet is the wastewater fund, wastewater enterprise fund income statement for the month of March. You will see that they have received forty-two point four eight percent of their budgeted revenues and only spent forty-eight point seven nine percent of their budgeted expenses. We do have, we did pay off the SRF loan in the enterprise fund, so you'll see a little bit of a drop in the sur-impact fees account. The next sheet in the packet is the sanitation enterprise fund income statement. You will see that they're running right in line where they should be. They've received forty-one point one three percent of their budgeted revenue, and they've only spent thirty-nine point eight seven percent of their budgeted expenses. A portion of that is due to the vehicles, the trucks haven't hit the income statement yet, that we just received. The next sheet is the judicial special revenue fund income statement. You'll see that they have received thirty-three point six nine percent of their budgeted revenues. That should pick up drastically with income tax intersections during this next month, or during this month, sorry. They've only spent thirty-seven point four six percent of their budgeted expenses. The next sheet in the packet is the gas tax fund income statement for the month of January, February, and March. You'll see that we're running in line where we should be on that. It may look a little odd on the expense side, just because it says a hundred and fifty-four percent of the budgeted expenses, but the way that works is on our paving projects and our state DOT projects where we only pay a small portion, all we budget is the small portion that we actually pay, not the entire amount of the project. Otherwise, we would have a drastically larger budget, and it was kind of skewed. The next sheet in the packet is the capital projects fund income statement. You will see that that is running very well. We actually just received the state trust fund money for this year, a couple of days ago, so we're running right in line where we should be there. The next sheet is the group health fund income statement for the months of January, February, and March. We're keeping a very close eye on that. We're going to have to make some changes during this next budget year as far as the group health fund goes. As you'll see, so far year-to-date, the fund has lost a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-one cents. We did have a couple of months where we weren't in the red, so that was positive. The next sheet in the packet is the bank account balances report for the month of March, showing that the balance of all city accounts at the end of March was nineteen million, nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. And the last sheet in the packet is the accounts payable and debt balances, showing the balance of all city accounts, balance of all city debt at the end of March was thirty-seven million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and two cents. One thing that will be coming off on tonight's agenda, we have the retirement of the remainder of the two thousand six Bs, that's four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Once we turn in this resolution to pay that off, after thirty days, we can actually pay that off, so that will come off the books. Another thing about tonight's agenda that I wanted to kind of touch on is Resolution Number Three concerning the police vehicles. It's a little bit confusing because it's, we're increasing, decreasing things. We are decreasing the amount that we had budgeted for fuel because we've seen a significant savings. The thirty thousand dollars is what we've saved thus far in the year compared to last year. The insurance proceeds is money that we're getting back on some of the vehicles that were damaged that were not the city's fault, and the gain on sale is obviously the sale on the vehicles that were not due to insurance proceeds. And then obviously, reserves is using excess money in the budget to pull, to use, to pay for that.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time? Counselor Bowles.
On the savings on the gas, is that due to having new vehicles versus the older vehicles and getting better gas mileage?
It's partially due to newer vehicles and better gas mileage, but it's also due to lower fuel costs.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Just one question on the reserve account, seventy-three one ninety-five coming out. What exactly reserve account is that?
It's just out of the general fund.
General fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to our agenda. We do have a consent agenda to consider. We have six items to consider on our consent agenda. And one is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weighted lots to be of public nuisance and ordinary abatement per Title XI, Chapter Sixty-seven of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended. Number two is a resolution to set a public hearing to grant a retail liquor, retail beer on or off premises and retail table wine on or off premises to a Targor Creek Craft House doing business as a Targor Creek Craft House LLC. Number three is a resolution to set a public hearing to grant a retail beer on or off premises and retail table wine on or off premises to Prattville Wharf Express doing business as Prattville Wharf Express LLC. Number four is a resolution to surplus two vehicles and various equipment from the police department. Number five is a resolution to surplus one vehicle from the fire department. And number six is to declare Landis McGlarty a nonresponsible bidder for bid number zero one six dash zero zero six. Have a motion to place these six items on a consent agenda. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in discussion. All in favor of placing these items on a consent agenda signify by raising your right hand. And these items have been placed on a consent agenda. Do we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will be in a discussion on any of these six items. All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and the consent agenda has been adopted. We'll move further into the agenda. We have an ordinance to amend Ordinance Book Twenty-Eleven, page zero two four, to change the legal description for districts one, three, five, and seven. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. To amend Ordinance Book Twenty-Eleven, page twenty-four, to change the legal description for districts one, three, five, and seven. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Spending ordinance of permanent nature, the rule must be suspended in order to be considered. We have a motion to suspend the rule.
So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule signify by raising your right hand, and the rules have been suspended. Will it be in a discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance has been Item number two is an ordinance also to establish use of the D-200 electronic vote counting system or any subsequent model device utilized by the Targor County Commission in compliance with seventeen dash seven dash twenty-one Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as amended, in city of Prattville municipal elections. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, yes, sir. Whereas, Chapter Seven of Title Seventeen of the Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, is amended, and the regulations adopted pursuant thereto by the Alabama Voting, Alabama Electronic Voting Committee provide for the use of electronic vote counting systems. And whereas, Section Seventeen dash seven dash twenty-one Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, is amended, provides that a municipality may, in its discretion by adoption of an appropriate ordinance, authorize, adopt, and direct the use of electronic vote counting systems for the use in all elections held in such municipality. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Prattville that for all elections held subsequent to the passage of this ordinance, the use of the DS-200 electronic vote counting system or any subsequent model device that the Targor County Commission shall utilize, which complies with Section Seventeen dash seven dash twenty-one Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, is amended, and any regulations adopted pursuant thereto is hereby authorized for the reporting, counting, and tabulating of any and all election results. Be it further ordained by the City Council of the city of Prattville that the mayor is hereby authorized to file a copy of this ordinance with the Alabama Secretary of State as provided in Section Seventeen dash seven dash twenty-one Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, is amended. Be it further ordained that all ordinances or parts of ordinances in any manner conflicting herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall become effective upon the adoption and publication as required by law. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This being an ordinance also, the rules must be suspended in order to be considered tonight. We have a motion to suspend.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of suspension of the rule signify by raising your right hand, and the rules have been suspended. Will it be in a discussion on this ordinance? All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and this ordinance is adopted. Our next item is a resolution to amend budget and to award bid number zero one six dash zero zero six to Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated for the purchase of five twenty-sixteen or newer police interceptor SUVs at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas, the city of Prattville Police Department has a need for five twenty-sixteen or newer police interceptor SUVs, and whereas, six bids were let for the police department for said vehicles, and whereas, two sealed bids were received, and Long Lewis of the River Region Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars per vehicle. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the city of Prattville that the following budget line items are amended as follows. Police fuel, decreased thirty thousand dollars. Reserves, decreased seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Insurance proceeds, increased thirty thousand dollars. Gain on sale, six thousand dollars. Police capital outlay, increased one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the city of Prattville awards bid number sixteen dash zero zero six at the cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars to Long Lewis of the River Regions Incorporated for five twenty-sixteen or newer police interceptor SUVs, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year twenty-sixteen budget line item, police department capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Will be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor of adoption signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution is adopted. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. At this time, we take comments from the persons present. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward to the microphone.
We are Jim and Brenda Skelton. We reside at one twenty-two Sycamore Drive, and thank you, Councilman Woods, fellow councilman members, and Mayor Gillespie. We would like to speak to you tonight on a familiar topic, heavy traffic, particularly truck traffic on Highway fourteen or Fairview Avenue. My wife has accumulated a few pages I'd like to present to each member, and I'll give the floor over to my wife, Brenda.
There's two things that have brought me here tonight. Something that happened back in November, and I emailed Mrs. Brown about it. And the second thing that really tipped the scales was when my husband came to the city council meeting last time, and he said a comment was made about Highway fourteen and the trash cans, and I'm thinking, seriously? I mean, there's a lot more important items on Highway fourteen than trash cans. I don't know how familiar, well, obviously you probably are, but... I don't know how familiar, well, obviously you probably are, but a day in the life of driving on Highway 14, trying to get on Sycamore Drive, which is right next to the cemetery. It has gotten to the point where I try not to even do it anymore. What I'll do is go on 31 and turn right on Skidmore and make my way through the neighborhood to get to my house. Because I have personally witnessed over and over and over, I start my turn signal in the, when the street starts turning, you know, over there to the right. I put on my left turn signal just to let everybody know, hey, I'm gonna turn, I'm gonna turn. It has nothing to do with speed. There, it's not speeding, and the trucks, the log trucks are gone. There's still other trucks that don't belong there, but the log trucks are gone. Thank you, God, because that was just horrendous. But anyway, I go to turn on my turn signal. It never fails, either you have a distracted driver, you have impatient drivers, they are so impatient, that they are literally going to the right, going in that field where there's the cows and the fence and all that. They're literally going in that field. And the thing that happened in November was when my daughter and I were in the car trying to turn left. I'm sorry, I have to turn left. I live there. And cars are beeping, you know, you cannot turn, there's car after car after car coming. I can't turn left. And not only did a car go to the right, car truck, I can't remember now, go to the right, but I guess somebody wasn't paying attention and to keep from rear-ending that car. This truck literally went to the left of me into the oncoming lane, went to the, went that way, and went back into the lane, almost had a head-on collision because they were, they weren't paying attention. And then people are tired of sitting there and sitting there and sitting there, and there's nothing I, we can do about it. We have to turn in, and we live there. So can you please either put a turn lane there, that field, can it be turned into some kind of extra road? And there's times you literally cannot turn, you try to turn left, you can't. Either the right's clear or the left, they're not clear. You know, you have to sit there and sit there and sit there. And it's not just turning left, it's turning right. There's car after car coming, and there's times you just literally just, just go out there, you're just like, I got, you know, I gotta go. You know, so you just speed on out of there. Right's okay, left is not. So please, I mean, there's something that's got to be done. I know for a few days there's that speed limit sign. It's not the speed. There, there's no turn lane, and they're just, these drivers are impatient, and they're gonna ram into you, or they go around, and there's, there, it's just totally dangerous. So I, I just, I can't keep quiet anymore. I just can't. I just, it's just too dangerous. So I appreciate you listening to me, and please, please do something about this area. It's, it's just dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And I appreciate you bringing it to us. The city mayor is already standing, so evidently he has something to say, and will, are you just up walking on your own?
Well, I would like to take an opportunity, not only, we're thanking for coming down and voicing your opinion, and I think it's really great about Prattville, you have the time at the beginning and also at the end. Really do appreciate you guys exercising your right there. And if you have time, if you're looking at our budget, we've actually have just started to do, and I probably won't be able to find it standing up here so quick, but we do have a new line item on here talking about highway projects, now, infrastructure, infrastructure reserves, which right now we only have 300,000 in it. But Denise Brown, Councilor Brown and I have been talking also, she's a chair also of the Street Committee on that. And we are working with our city engineer, city planner, trying to work through MPO, Metropolitan, Montgomery Planning Organization, to try to do something there on Fairview, used to be known as 14 to most of us here. But we are looking to try to put in some turning lanes, but now it's a slow process. It's been talked about for some time, the widening of the Queen Smith toward 31 has been talked about, there's been a lot of engineering plans. One of the first steps to try to move toward that is putting some money aside for that. We're gonna try to continue to build that fund, so that way we can actually help make you feel like you're a safer driver out there. I do appreciate your comments, because we have done our due diligence, trying to keep the truckers off. We're still working on that.
That's an open question, Mr. Mayor.
If, anytime if you do see something, please say something. Pick up your phone, call 911, let us know, because I know I've talked with other people who've had, call 911, let us know about truckers, you know, that's not supposed to be on there. It's okay for some trucks, but not all.
I understand that.
But anything that we can do, but I hope if you find time, look in our budget, and you'll see that we are working toward that. But no immediate fixes for you, except for our, our police department will be out there on a more regular basis. Now, in the past, we have had people come down and complain, and a couple of them, we found out were the first ones to get a ticket. So please, please be careful in that area. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Thank you, everyone.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Good evening.
I appreciate you guys letting me come in here again today. It was your last council meeting we had. I just want to bring something to your attention. My name is Eddie Barnes. I reside at 762 State Before Trail. I want to bring a couple of things, just one thing up this afternoon, and I'm following up on a proposal I submitted the last time in the last council meeting. I need to have some information on that. And when I, as I was walking up here, I thought, well, maybe I should have called you, you, or you, right? But what I'm, I'm talking to the whole, I want everybody to hear this together because I think it's so important. And again, Highland Ridge, I'm a member of that homeowners association, and we're making a proposal to the sidewalk change. That sidewalk change in Chapter 54, Alabama Code of Ordinance, Chapter 54, in general, streets, sidewalks, and other public places, Article 1, Section 54.60, 54-2, we're requesting a change. You all have that the last time. I need a status on that, or, and I can tell you, until we get feedback on that, I'll be standing in front of you every single meeting that you have. Let you know that now. I'm a former Marine, spent three decades in it, so standing don't bother me at all. All right? So I can last, I believe. I think I can. All right? So I'm just asking for your information. Can you kind of, do you have anything on that today? Because I noticed it's not on your agenda here, right? Or maybe I'm missing a step here, and I'm definitely willing to listen. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. Usually the way that's held, and I'll let your councilperson speak to that, is that it goes into a committee, administration works along with the committee if and when they start on it. And then that person, and I believe, is that Ms. Brown, so I will let Ms. Brown address that. But that's usually the way, and if you haven't gotten a response from her, you should be getting one. If she'd like to speak to that, I'll let her do so. But, but that's the way it's done.
Okay.
At this point, you don't, we don't have anything yet.
Yes, sir.
We have no problem with you coming here, so you can come much as you want to.
Sure.
But that process, still, I would contact one of those people that you spoke about, especially that person first.
Okay. I think, I thank you so much if you, unless you have.
What I was, what I was gonna say is, my first step on that is to confer with the city attorney. We, we're not the council that put that in place, but another council did, and we need to find out the reasons that they did that before we reverse that. So I'll be conferring with her, with him, and then I'll take it to the Streets Committee to, to discuss further, and we'll, you know, we can move from there.
If I may say, sir, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Now that I know, I probably won't show up and do this. If I do, I won't show up and be down here next, next month. But, because I'll be calling one of the three here, we've got three councilpeople out in Highland Ridge, and I definitely want to work on that. And we appreciate, matter of fact, Mr. Mayor, we appreciate all you guys who came to the homeowners association this month. We appreciate that, and I think we had a good time, and the people that were there really, really appreciate you, your coming out and supporting us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. With that, Mayor, you have any further comments? And I think we've gone through the councils, if they're correct. Again, let me thank everyone, as always, no particular department, but thank all. Thank this council, employees. As I said, the council works hard, which your committees, it's getting ready to have a budget before, so I urge you to continue meeting with your committees before we get here to make these decisions. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 30, 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. We have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.